Call us meeting order. Tonight, we're going to be led in the pledge by Mr. Gary Cardy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Cardy. I'd like to welcome everyone to work session tonight. I trust everyone's probably looked at the agenda. Does anybody have any questions on the actual agenda? How about consent agenda? Mr. Young?
On the E contracts, CTE Common Core, do we still need to do that with the St. Mary's Airs for Common Core?
That's a career and technical education. So really, it's a training career. What they make them, ask them to do is to integrate writing into career and technical education. I'm not sure why they put the word Common Core on it. Is that what the state's calling it?
Yes, sir. It's the integration of those standards. We still have those standards because the policy was close upon the Common Core is still.
Still in place.
I was going to make sure we don't any good money after bad here, so.
No, sir. That's still our standards. That's enforced by the state.
Then the letter out there, how the county transfers student was. See, that was F.
Um, question.
Let me look that and see what.
Let's see F first, Mr. Aixman.
Let me see what that may ask.
It's not superintendent number on the tab. It's called superintendent number.
Do you remember what number it is?
I found it up on the screen there.
Student.
You got it up on the screen? Okay.
She's a California student.
This would be a rather routine. She was evidently in an, which we do if they were in an alternative school, we get them in our alternative school. This looks like one of them items. This one is in an alternative school because of the tenant. Appears which has moved here. State law says that if they transfer from an alternative in the school, we have to approve it. So that looks like what that one is. They don't work out, we don't keep them.
The only difference would be if it was a zero of Tolliver.
That's why it's all on there. But we do it for just if they're alternative school replacement. I mean, that's normally, in some places, they would put them back in regular school. But our first step, when they come in, is basically put them in an alternative school. And if we can work them out fairly quickly, we do that.
Mr. Aix.
Under I, school salary supplements and contract payments. I looked down through Eagleville, Eagleville, Eagleville. 2014 summer basketball official they're paying a whole bunch of people. Did they run a summer camp out there? Is that a summer-long event that goes on?
I'd say there's a summer camp. In fact, most of them do or attend one. You want us to find out more about that?
This is probably 26 different officials participating.
I wonder if that may be a clearing fund. Do you know, Paula?
Just from my experience with summertime AAU and all that stuff, it's just not, it's just a whole lot.
Make us a note and let's see. We'll ask.
Just curious. I'm sure there's a.
And it may be a flow through, maybe a flow through family. If they do an account, it may be that over time.
That it's paid for and they're paying out.
That it's flowing through.
So anytime they handle the funds, they must have it approved locally.
We have to account for it. But we'll find out. That may well may be it. Okay. We'll ask tomorrow. Mr. Tolliver.
Anybody else? All right, Mr. Oldham. Number seven, you just want to break the look at that?
Yes, we've got, of course, some recognitions, the wrestling championship, and then also Alexia Middleton of the Miss Basketball. And then I've also, we've invited, Mr. Hodge received an email from an ER doctor. You know, I was telling you last week about the child who went into cardiac arrest and all. And this ER doctor, which happens to be the child's uncle, commends them that he, well, I'll read the letter tomorrow night. He just said the boy wouldn't be with us if they didn't do what they have been able to do. And that he was very surprised that a school system had this in place, had practiced Code Blues and could do this with the AED machines and all. So he said, real compliment to our people and our nursing staff, but they're going to, there's three of them. Dr. Phillips is going to be here tomorrow night, the SRO is going to be here tomorrow night, play the big part, and the nurse is going to be here tomorrow night. It's that we ought to thank them.
We've got a wrestler also.
Right, the wrestling, the first one, uh-huh. Champion Sean Kennedy, Laverne High School. Want to go to eight?
Number eight.
Special course request. The instruction department is requesting permission to amend the application to offer credits with special course under the following guidelines, Rule 521-3.052A. Local school system may offer special course not listed in 521-3.06 on an experimental basis. Commissioner of Education must approve each course in advance each year. After three years, the course may become permanent part of the local school program upon approval of the State Board of Education. After three years, the special course request must be submitted if the teacher listed on the application changes. Recommended approval must approve a Rutherford County amending application for new special courses to be offered to the named schools in 2014-15 as presented. Etymology, which is often quite a few of our schools, would be the first year at Laverne High School, and historically speaking, first year request Siegel High School. Would you?
Dr. Washington was the end of that amendment. I looked it up as far as the high school course, and it's talking about the historical speeches and things from the European time periods, early European periods, as well as probably about those speeches. And that's typically Alberta, that's for sure about more.
We have to submit the curriculum to the state along with the request for the course. So curriculum is listed out, what the materials they use, who the teacher will be, and what that material covers.
The state approves this?
They have to, all special course, if you're going to give credit.
Mr. Turner.
There's minimum number of students on the spots.
Yes. Yeah, the number that we try to go with typically, and y'all set this standard, and the only time where you get caught is sometimes in an AP. But if you, man, this goes back to even when you were here, it was at least 15, we sit in the high school, you know? So that's the number we try to go to. Every once in a while, we'll get a smaller school, an Eagleville or somewhere smaller school, where 12 want to take an AP that we'll try to work something out to let that happen. But that's the number we typically look at.
I hate to talk about schools, but we keep adding classes and adding classes, and every time you add a class, you've got to have someone to teach it. And, you know, somewhere along, and you've got to have space for them to be. And when you look at these classes that we have now in the high school, it just stretches on and on. And I know we have more requirements, but, you know, when we talk about budgeting, that has an impact upon the budget. And are we looking at these classes that we're offering in a manner that, you know, just because someone wants it, does that make it necessary? And is it cost-effective? You know, there's a core group of classes that we need. And beyond that, there are certain classes that benefit a large majority of the students. But then you get into all these fringe classes, and that's what we're seeing a lot of in the high school. And they're costly. And when you start talking about cutting teachers and then you adding these classes, I just, justification for really has to be strong, in my opinion.
The kid, the kid's going to be in, the only problem you have is if the number counts are low, because those same kids are going to be somewhere else. I mean, they would either be in another, you'd have, might have to have another section in a regular English or something like that. There's an interesting study, and I was looking at it last week with the high school principals. And we were looking at ACT made a report about what courses taken impact higher ACT scores. And one of them in English was that the kids took additional English courses that were not English 1, 2, 3, 4. There was the kids that had taken the fifth one, or something like etymology here or something like that, would, were scoring higher on ACT. It was also true in social studies. I found that kind of interesting. You know, we think of US history, but the kids who had taken additional courses in it scored higher. Now, is it just the brighter kids taking those courses? I mean, I'm sure that is in some cases, that would be taking the extra ones. But it was really an interesting, and I can, we can get that to you, and it's for Rutherford County. It shows how many kids we had taken those courses and what percent of kids scored college-ready that took these specific courses. If y'all would like to see that, we can give you a copy. It'd be from one year ago, basically, because we haven't gotten one from this year. This is, it's an interesting thing to look at. We looked at with high school principals last week.
This teacher for historical speaking etymology of the two different teachers, that's not the only class they teach. They teach the other standard classes as well. But they may have one class that they feel that's during, but they have to get some class.
Right. And I, but if you have a minimum of 15, and you have two 15s, and then you've got a, you know, you can go to a class that's got 26 in it, it's not complete, and then they take something else and get 26 in it. That's, that's just what I'm, I'm looking at from the standpoint of, it has really dwelled on me that we're, we're adding kids after kids in the system, and we're, we're holding this line so close with the teachers. And I just want, I just want to express a concern that we're using them as efficiently as possible. And I like students to enjoy their school day and do things that they, they want to do, and learn things that they want to learn. But there is a cost associated with that.
So many of our small classes like that, like any of the 6P classes, other classes where those numbers are less than 30 or 35, or we've got those bags and we've got the 17s and 18s, we certainly correct.
Well, CTE has to average 20, so it can't be over that. You'll have some 16s and 17s to average with 22s and 23s, you know? Well, we'll look at it some more and see. I mean, I would hope still the 215s, they do 130, but we'll, we can look at that when we get into scheduling. And, and the way it, the way it really comes back to them most of the time is, is when they ask for another teacher, Mr. Zago sits down and puts the numbers to it and does this, you know? Because before we grant the other teachers, if, if you are asking for a teacher in, say, mathematics, we make you send us your master spreadsheet, which got every teacher teaches mathematics in it, and the, out to the columns are periods of the day, and what class they're teaching, and how many kids are in that class. So that's how we run it before we, and we was doing that when I was back there in instruction too. So we do it crosswise to see if there's a way they can handle it by moving something around. And we, we say no, no more often than you would think. In fact, you had one today change that you had already. Somebody swapped out.
What I do is also on our student information system, I run a teacher utilization report, and you make that a nice number. I just don't take, not that I don't trust my ministry, but I just don't take their word in their schedule. I look at actual students that are entered into the computer into those classrooms and run those reports as well. And I turn down all the data between them.
Mr. Gill used to have me do that, too. I mean, he would not give a teacher out until, you know, I had ran the reports from our student management system, and we showed by period, teachers that were certified to do that, what they were teaching.
Just, just a concern.
Yeah, I understand.
Anybody else? Number nine.
Number nine, ESEA is Educational Secondary and Elementary Education Act. That's the one that they've been trying to get renewed for, I can't remember since when. When, Amy? 2007, it hadn't been renewed. Congress is still dealing with, so it's still the old version. And IDEA, of course, is Individual Disability Education Act. That's your special ed. This is a consolidated funding application. Tennessee has lumped them together now, and we do it on an E plan report, is what we do. So that's why that's together. Under the Elementary Secondary Education Act and the Individual Disabilities Act, the local consolidated grant application for fiscal year 2015.01 includes the following components. Improved academic achievement for the disadvantaged, which is a Title I, Title II, Part A, teacher and principal training and recruitment, and Title III is Part A, English language acquisition, language enhancement, and academic achievement. And the IDEA Part B, individual with disabilities, and IDEA preschool. And motion to approve the fiscal year 2015-01 local consolidated grant application under ESEA, IDEA, and authorize the director of schools to file in a necessary budget revision, addenda, or transfer request. We have people here tonight, if y'all want to know more about this, we can talk about it. But this is, this is a typical, each year, you have to turn in your application. Some of the monies come down that are for English language learners, of course, some, if it says Title I, it comes down with schools that are, that are tied to Title I. We have to make those budgets under those guidelines. And if they're special education, the same way Ms. Bell has to turn that in, there's a certain percentages that have to go for certain, these categories, and the state has to approve it. We enter it online, and then they review it, they notify us back whether they, they approve it or not. Then I have to go in again and confirm that, authorize that. So it's a multi-step process of doing it, but doesn't look like, but it is kind of a routine thing, and we revise it even during the year, as additional monies come in or something happens. These ladies are here, if you'd like to know more, talk about it.
Anybody got any questions? All right. Number 10.
Number 10 is under facilities, and this is server room HVAC system. Rutherford County Schools System Hardware and Support Group is in the process of enlarging and upgrading the secondary server room located in the Engineering Department Hall. To meet the growing size and number of servers and overcome the heat that is generated by these servers and keep the servers running smoothly, a new HVAC system is required. The Engineering Department has developed the requirements and requested that Hawke Mechanical submit an estimate to perform under a design bill contract. The estimate for the preferred system is $72,000. Hawke Mechanical has done several design bill projects for Rutherford County schools over the past several years and always performed flawlessly. Recommend approval, motion to approve Hawke Mechanical with a budget of $72,000 for design bill of an HVAC system for the secondary server room in the central office. The system will be approximately 13 and a half tons and funded through technology budget. Design bill is a professional service. The problem literally is, Mr. Nipper, is that it's getting too hot in there. We're running above 70 degrees or so. And the number of servers we're having adding, that we're growing, and so as this temperature has grown, gets higher, it starts creating issues with us when we have the downtime. Now, we have a portable in there now, and you may have seen, if you come in the back door, you see it sitting on the floor. But the issue is that we need to make something as we expand even further, that's more permanent to cool those servers down. That's, that's basically what we're dealing with here. And Mr. Cardy's here can talk about it if you would like, but it's, it really sits in the back of this building where our servers are.
I just, you know, we've lost a server a couple times this year because of the heat. So, and the more space that we add, the more software that's running, those types of things, the more employees we have, our servers are growing. So, and it is, keep them cool, make them operate properly, and Hawke Mechanical has done several jobs for us, and done excellent jobs. Two jobs that we've done recently was a smaller contractor that's kind of turned into a nightmare before we get them out. People get the jobs that are not actually capable of getting done the way that we expect them to be done. So we want to just have them design and build it and get it on the way.
If you remember, Mr. Solomon came to see us, and part of the monies that came from the governor was that to upgrade, you know, technology, we increased from 100 gig pipeline at one time to 250 gig pipeline. Well, that means you've got, again, 150% more things coming from the schools hitting those servers again. So, I mean, as that really kicks in next year and all, we get all those in place, my guess is, if we don't do something, the temperature is going to go up more, and we'll be down more. I mean, that's the bottom line. And Darren, you can speak to that better than I can, Mr. Nipper, so.
Let me ask, how much growth, additional growth will they add into it? Like, you know, could we put another 20 servers in there, or?
We can, with 13 and a half ton unit, we have plenty of room for expansion.
So it, it will last us year, years to come, I mean.
We're adding additional blades in it, you know, to do it. You know, basically, a computer that operates it, but we add additional blades in to do that, which is cheaper than the whole system at one time for the expansion.
How big an area is this?
The area in there is probably 12 by 30. But, you know, each one of the servers would like have a little heat in it. Takes quite a bit of tons, you know? A house takes 600 square feet per ton. But you have such more latent heat level than that if you really have that at that age.
I mean, I'm just wondering if 13 and a half tons will do it.
I think it will.
It's supplementing our current system, right?
We've got a, we've got a David Pride will be working for Hawke, he's a professional engineer. He's done several of the buildings through computing and calculators and tons. He's always done excellent jobs, so I think we'll be okay.
Great.
Anybody else? All right, number 11.
Number 11 is non-renewal of non-tenured teachers. I think you have a list. Recommend approval, motion to authorize the director of schools recommendation for non-renewal of non-tenured teachers at the conclusion of 2013-14 school year. And that, that's been a list that's been changing. I think you got one yesterday, a name was removed, or something. Or several times. Typically, in a given year, we'll have 60 to 70. I've gone through and pulled, each of these names, if they have a history, to look at their teacher affect data and that sort of thing, see what the score is. Some of them are first year for a number of things. Some of it is performance, some of it is how they mix with the other factors, your professional learning community situation, how that operates. Of course, in a given year, we'll, with resignations, retirements, growth and everything, 300, 350 teachers or so.
Questions, comments? Mr. Tolliver.
Is this, is this a one-time opportunity? Is there a window of opportunity here, or how does that play out? Would, is there a possibility that other decisions might be made later?
Do you want to get up and speak to it? Ms. Barnes, if it comes to HR, I'll just let her speak for you.
Each year, we ask principals to make staffing decisions regarding certified non-tenured teachers. The cutoff date set by the state is June 15th for notification of teachers for their assignment for the next school year. Well, we don't want to try to do that notification during the summer after everyone's left, so we try to do it during the last couple of weeks of May, so that we can continue teaching and have positive instruction in our school environments, and then make that notification so that, as a courtesy to the teachers who may be on that list and may be not, not returning to us the next year. But yes, it is a one-time thing. We send out the information to the principals and ask for that staffing information to be returned to us by a cutoff date. And then principals know that within the next weeks, while we're compiling the list, they can call us and say, I've changed my mind, I decided to pull that name off, or I need to add a name. So that's why I say it was fluid up until today. Today was the actual cutoff for them, because this was the board meeting night.
And it's not uncommon for one of these names, it may be on it, to be at a different school next year. They, they still have the freedom to interview or go somewhere else and do. Of course, they'll probably call the prior principal, you know, what, what's the issue? What's involved? That sort of thing, but it happens.
Mr. Oldham, if I can add, this all ties into the tenure process, because the tenure law changed to three years ago, and now a teacher has to be employed for a period of five years within a seven-year cycle, at which time, if they meet that yearly criteria and they have exceeds expectations or meets expectations, significantly exceeds expectations of four or five on their growth type data, then they are eligible for tenure. So principals have that five-year period to make these decisions, so that they retain the best for Rutherford County.
And the, and the board approves the tenure list, right?
Yes, and that we'll do that in September, once the scores all come back during the summer, and we run all the numbers and make sure we have everything correct.
See, they have to be, you know, a certain score before we can recommend tenure. We'll not have that till.
Right. Last year, we only had 10 people, if you remember, on the tenure list because of the change. This year, we'll see a larger number. Okay? Any other questions?
Yes. Is it uncommon for us not to see why they're on this list?
State law, state law gives the director of schools the authority to non-renew, because these are probationary teachers, and so we do not give a reason for that purpose. State law says you have the authority to make that decision in the best interest of your school system.
Jeff Reed may want to answer that for you. Jeff, you want to?
Well, she's correct, sir. Yeah, that decision was vested with the director of schools some time ago, but legislation, so the director of schools makes the call with respect to those type of employment decisions.
So as a courtesy, we just get, we get this list?
Yes.
Basically, we find it's not beneficial to do.
Correct.
You know, to, to list specific things elaborate, because that becomes contestable issues.
You mentioned the possibility that they may end up in the system somewhere. Is there also figured into this the opportunity to, to apply for transfer?
Yes.
That a teacher could have that opportunity before that name would appear on the list?
As long as a teacher applies for transfers. Prior to receiving their notification of non-renewal. After that, they would apply as a new employee, because their.
When we, when we post vacancies, we ask principals to interview first, include in their list, people that's within our system transferring to another school.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
That's, they have to do them, and then any other applicants or so that they choose. I mean, we literally now, tell them about how many applications we get when somebody posts. I'll let you do it.
For any given position, especially at the elementary level of K through five, principals receive somewhere between a hundred and fifty to two hundred applicants, especially this time of year, when we have a new group of graduates. The high school positions may not have quite as many, but they're well up to one hundred applicants for a position. So they have a strong pool to select from. We do not prevent a teacher who's been non-renewed from coming back into our system, but we always tell principals to call references and make sure everything checks out, which they would do for any candidate that they choose to recommend.
Anybody else?
All right, number twelve, general discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize for my late arrival, and I hate to go backwards on the agenda, but I was wondering, Mr. Odom, in our work session here, on the consent agenda, we have , uh, letter G, the, uh, student fees for two thousand fourteen, fifteen?
There's no change?
Okay.
From the prior year?
Okay.
Ms. Clive told me today, there have not been any recommendations for a change from what we had prior year, so.
Good, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, the only thing I've got, just to remind everybody, tomorrow night, we're making it four thirty. Get, have graduations after that, over at Williamson County, so. That's the reason for the four thirty. Anybody else?
We're beginning to get inquiries about the budget coming up, because we did provide every commissioner, the mayor, and Ms. Nolan copies of the budget you approved on Wednesday night last week. We gave it to them Thursday night at their meeting, so we're getting a few inquiries now, you know, dealing with the insurance piece, and, um, you know, what some of the figures stand for. Actually, Jeff, tonight, he is up at the Budget and Finance. They're not doing our budget tonight, they're doing the county general. But Jeff is up there tonight, uh, you know, sitting with that and all, so. We're getting, we're beginning to get a few phone calls, and they'll have some next week. Any questions?
Mr. Eich?
I read Sunday's paper, and I thought, I, I don't think the intention was what could have been easily perceived, but it commented on, Mr. Sam just comments, which were right on target, and, and what he was saying was, "It's hard to expect anybody to ask for any tax increase when they're running for an office that sets the tax rate." Uh, yet the, the paper seemed to slant it. In my, maybe unnatural thinking, I don't know, but it seemed to me that they were trying to blame Jeff or the commissioners not doing their job. We all know how silly that is, but I did, anybody else happen to read that comment in Sunday's paper? Uh, it was on the editorial page of the Journal.
Yeah, I read it, though. I think it commented that, that they spoke of, it wasn't during the meeting, it was after the meeting.
Okay. And, and yet, what he said was, the facts, I mean, it was just as honest as it could be, so he has no control over setting the tax rate, so I just felt like he was taking an unfair, they took an unfair shot at him, and we know what a great job he does.
Well, I said it was after the meeting, 'cause I was, I was talking with him at the same, at the time with, uh, Mr. Broden, so, uh, that's where that comes from. I think they alluded to the fact it was during the meeting, uh, which it wasn't.
Some of the questions right now coming here are dealing with, you said somebody's not got a step increase, the hundred and twenty dollars to try to cover the cost of insurance. Another thing they questioned, insurance amount. Remember, we had the increase in January, so you had the six months in January, now you got the, the first six months to January of next year, so those calculations, things like that, which we'll have to explain next week when we do it. There's, uh, you don't, you're not adding, was it three point four EAs? But the, the increases there, and they're on a step system, and certain cycle years, you'll have several that have a step increase, and another year, you, you won't have nearly as many, but that's just some things we'll have to explain to them as they start asking the questions next week, and, uh, they probably will.
Anybody else? Nothing else, we'll stand adjourned and see everybody tomorrow at four thirty.